All right, we'll bring this meeting to order. Uh, Ms. Chapman, can you lead us in the invocation of the Blessed Jesus?
I would love to.
Thank you.
If you'll bow your heads with me. Our most gracious, merciful, and loving Father God, it is through your perfect Son, Jesus, that we humbly bow our heads in prayer. Thank you, God, for allowing us the privilege and honor to come to you today as we are gathered here to serve as citizens of this county. Lord, I pray your hand over each and every one of us today to be thoughtful, as you, God, are thoughtful of us. Caring, God, as you care for us. Merciful, as you, God, are merciful toward us. And give us the grace and mercy where we fail you and fall short. Lord, we pray for our county and the families of whom we represent in this role, which you, God, have placed upon each of us. Lord, I ask that you be with us today and help us to be in one accord to make decisions that are pleasing to you. God, thank you for providing the pathways for our new county administrator to find his way back home. Lord, we ask that you fill his cup with joy in serving the county. Fill his cup with patience and understanding, and finally his cup with mercy, to show it and receive it. Ask, God, that you watch over our law enforcement, our emergency responders, our fire department, and those men and women who are in service around the world, providing us the freedom that we have in this very moment. We ask you to watch over this county, this country, and the nations around the world as we, that have read the book, see the fulfillment of your word each day. It is in the precious, mighty, and holy name of Jesus that we ask and pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wilson, can you do the voting, please?
Yes, sir. Terry Jeter, District One.
Here.
Michelle Glover, District Two.
Here.
Eddie Skeen, District Three.
Here.
Michael Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Danny Castile, District Five.
Here.
Chris Manus, District Six.
Here.
And Stephanie Addington, at large.
Here.
Mr. Chair, can you give it for him?
Awesome. Uh, has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? I know Michelle has. Uh, are there any changes, approved additions, or abstractions?
I'll make a motion, sorry.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
And then I'll second that motion.
All right, Stephanie makes the motion, Michelle seconds. I'll vote by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we got quite a few minutes to approve here. First, have you all had a chance to read over the minutes for May 16th, 2025, for our special cause meeting? Are there any changes that you would like to make to that, or should we approve it as is?
I'll make a motion, we approve it as is.
All right. Mr. Jeter makes the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds. I'll vote by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, June 4th, 2025, regular meeting, has everyone had a chance to read those? Are there any changes? Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Stephanie makes the motion.
I'll second.
Michelle seconds. I'll vote, I'll vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, June 4th, a budget workshop, that's the second half of that day. Are there any changes? Does everything look good there? Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Michelle.
I'll second.
Michelle makes the motion, Stephanie seconds. I'll vote by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, June 23rd, 2025, uh, has everyone had a chance to read over that? Are there any changes, any additions? All right, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Michelle makes the motion.
And I'll.
Stephanie seconds. All right, I'll vote by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
What about the 30s, do we need to do it?
I don't think those are done yet.
Okay.
Yeah, they're still processed.
All right, thank you.
All right, citizens' expression. Uh, I don't have my exact piece of paper here today, I have only regular. Oh, do you? I'm having a little trouble getting things to load for me this morning.
I do.
Yeah.
I know. Oh, right here, just.
Awesome. Oh, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Citizen's expression period is a point in the meeting where anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, and the county, and/or what organization that you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Today, we have Ms. Toss and Mr. Chapman. Additionally, I would like to remind everyone that we have a time limit on these, and it will show up on the screens. Ms. Toss, if you could.
Good morning. Hey, Ms. Toss, Snowflake Road. And I've got some, that's on Snowflake Road back in me. And it's about dirt roads in Scott County. We got 252 miles of dirt roads in Scott County. We got bushes, potholes, washboards, and with summer coming on, dust. They came through once and put some, it rained the next day. And I know VDOT can't work without money. And it takes a lot of workers to take care of just 252 miles of dirt road, not counting all the other. And that's why I'm trying to get hold of Mr. Terry Kilgore to get more money allotted for dirt roads. And, and if he had to drive them dirt roads everything, every day, twice a day, or whatever, I think that'd be a change. And, and then another thing I bring up is the Riverside property over there. It don't look like there's anything much happening over there. And we've heard a daycare center coming in, but it don't look like it's happening. But that would be more money coming in for the county if we could get something over there to bring in more money for the county. Let's see, is that all I've got to touch on? And I want to thank you all for your hard work. I know y'all, it's, it's a job. And keep Snowflake Road on the six-year plan. And the question is, I guess I'll have to ask Mr. Sumter again, one year. And y'all have a happy and a blessed fourth. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chapman.
Good morning, my name is Robert Chapman, and I'm the park manager of Natural Tunnel State Park and the current treasurer of the Scott County Chamber of Commerce. The Danny Boone Wilderness Trail Association is partnering with the park to apply for a grant through the Virginia Land Conservation Fund for funding to purchase property between the Danny Boone Wilderness Trail Interpreta Center and Can Gap in Duffield. This property is privately owned and is one of the last remaining sections of the Wilderness Trail that is under served. The goal of the Danny Boone Wilderness Trail Association is to purchase the property, then donate it to DCR and Natural Tunnel to one day establish a multi-use trail connecting the Danny Boone Wilderness Trail Interpreta Center to Can Gap and the property that the Danny Boone Wilderness Trail Association already owns on top of the mountain there. I'm here today on behalf of the Danny Boone Wilderness Trail Association and the park to ask for a letter of support as part of this grant application process. I've given you a copy of a sample letter, and I can also submit an electronic copy for you to place on your letterhead, should you decide to help support us in this effort. Our community is rich in cultural and natural resources, and supporting this effort is a way to help Natural Tunnel continue our mission to conserve natural, scenic, historic, and cultural resources of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and to provide recreational and educational opportunities consistent with good stewardship of these lands, water, and facilities, and leave them unimpaired for future generations to enjoy. I look forward to hearing from you, and I gave you a copy of the letter. If you have any questions, please hesitate to reach out. My contact information is on that letter that you have. And I'll be glad to email, Chairman Manus, you, if you'd like a copy electronically, if y'all decide to do so. Thank you.
Okay, sir, because I suppose I'll speak to you there. Sure, just a question, I don't know if you're the one over, or maybe you can tell me or something. I'd like to park a parked hanging rock in Hines, uh, out in even one over in Wise County, Gus River. I notice they don't keep them up no more. Brush is in it. Lot of moss on top of the buildings and stuff, really run down. Picnic tables not clean or nothing. Did you tell me, or maybe you might be the one over, or something, how to get that maybe straightened up?
Unfortunately, those properties don't fall under Department of Conservation and Recreation with the state of Virginia. They may be forest service properties.
Yes.
And so that would be something that you might work with the, maybe the Clinch Ranger District Office, maybe out in Norton, start there, maybe work with some of their folks specifically, try to get some of those areas addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
I was, uh, sorry, I never wrote my name down on the list, but I'm Darrell Darty. I live on Paxton Frank Road, but my bus route is on 681. And I come through there twice a day, was through that right now. And sure, you ain't never getting cut or nothing, matter of time you'll cut it, you know. I've got a proposition, I just want to ask you all. I drive school bus, and seeing it bleeding, I was wondering if I could pick y'all up in school bus here one morning, take y'all tour ride through, uh, Snowflake, down to Nickle Field, cross Ten, holler back through Big Moxon, back down here. That's an option, I'm gonna get set with you all. I guess Dexter Martin, he'd be very blessed with John Person, one of them too, but anyway, if you see it bleeding, and you can see what kind of road it is. And I travel that road twice a day when school starts. Plus, I take kids on trips, field trips, nowhere else. And what's embarrassing is when I take that bus and go through there, it's dirty. And anytime I park that bus, ladies everywhere where that bus is from, Scott County. And I hold up that sometime, sometimes I try to wash that bus when I can, if I can, wash it off, wash the dust off. But I know road is hard to keep up, I know it takes money, but we need something to help Scott County out so our kids stay here longer. Because they do buy their new cars now, or $50,000 or better. And you don't want another car over a dirt road. Y'all won't take y'all to the dirt road either. It takes time, it takes money, and I appreciate anything you could possibly do. But you can keep that proposition in mind, if you don't care if you do, I'll be glad to take you one day, one morning, nine o'clock, get back here at 12, be no problem, anytime. But, uh, thank you, and I appreciate your time. Please, watch your back.
Anyone else for public expression? With that, we'll close the public expression.
I have some comments in regards to any other actions you need to take.
Uh, can we do the Can Gap?
Sure.
Support?
Sure.
So, uh, do I hear a motion for a letter of support for the Can Gap access property acquisition?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, Michelle makes the motion, Daryl seconds. Everybody vote by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Motion carries. Uh, Mr. Darty, I spoke to you earlier, but I did speak with Mr. Sumter, with VDOT and Wise, and their plans are to clear the brush on Snowflake Road before school starts. Their crews are still working on the storm cleanup, but he said that would be taken care of for school starts. Ms. Toss, I think you're about four years out on your road. I can get his exact date, when that's going to be paved, but I think you're about four years out on getting that paved. But you bring up a good point, I was going to talk about it later in the meeting, but I think this is the appropriate time to discuss it. We keep talking about dirt roads. We're on pace to get all of our dirt roads paved in the next 500 years. Now, we can sit here and talk about it, but really, we can't do much about that. But we have people that can, and that's Mr. Kilgore and Mr. Pillion. And I would like to make a motion that we invite them to our meeting, a public meeting, supervisory meeting, to address these concerns. These are reoccurring, not ten or not thou. So I'd like to make a motion that we invite Mr. Kilgore and Mr. Pillion to discuss our road situation in Scott County.
I'll second that.
All right, everybody vote by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, we'll send them out an invitation to Mr. Kilgore and Mr. Pillion. All right, are there anything, is there anything else that we would like to discuss or address during this time? All right, then we'll move on. Uh, we don't have any public carries, I mean, do we? Unfinished business, erosion and some control ordinance, Mr. Isaac Stanley?
Good morning, my name is Isaac Stanley, I work for Scott County Soil and Water. Uh, here to follow up on the ordinance revision changes I presented to you all last month. I hope everybody has had a chance to rebuil those. Are there any questions or comments, concerns?
I did speak with private committee, and I think you confirmed that there's no engineering required farm construction.
Right, if you adopt this, yeah.
If adopted. Uh, there's no public hearing, since we're not changing, if we adopt it, since we're not modifying the ordinance as presented, there's no public hearing required. Okay.
There is public hearing required. Right. We are admitting the ordinance.
I'm not sure on that.
Yeah, we have to come into admitting the ordinance. After that, for public hearing in August.
Okay.
All right, has everybody had a chance to read over that in the month between? Everybody okay with it? Do I have a motion to approve, advertise a hearing for these changes to the ordinance?
So moved.
All right, Stephanie makes the motion, Mr. Jeter seconds. Uh, everybody vote by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Yep, quick.
All right, new business, uh, thank you, Mr. Stanley, I'm sorry. New business, memorandum of understanding on Southern County Recycling. Uh, yeah, if Mr. Dominguez would like to present that.
Good morning, Board. Um, I introduced this, I think at the last meeting, that this was coming up, and we'd worked with Southern County on finalizing the memo of understanding between Scott County Public Works and Southern County. They have recently constructed a recycling facility in Plunkel, and they invited us to bring our recycled materials to their facility at no cost, which is a very admirable thing that Southern County's been reaching out regionally to try to help the recycling problem. They'll be accepting paper and cardboard, plastics one through seven, aluminum and steel cans, and other which we agree recycle items that might come up. You know, we have a responsibility to abide by the rules and, and keep relationships strong. So I'll talk to the drivers about, show them where to go, and work on the logistics here in the county. Uh, we haven't been recycling since the China Shield proclamation came through, and it fell away from everybody. Now, it's been quite a number of years now, I think, maybe eight, seven, eight years now. So, uh, we got to get back into the swing. We have our recycling being staged, and have had it staged at the transfer station, and other amenities are already in the solid waste centers. We will need, I think something the public has wanted, but the public will also have to be disciplined at our solid waste centers, and not contaminating recycling materials. That, where we don't have a man all the time, I hope for that we don't see that, that we'll come back to you and invest that as, as we move forward. But it's a big deal, a good opportunity for the county to get back into the recycling game. And we're asking today that I can sign a MOU of Southern County for them to accept our recycling. And it has a beginning and a end date, but they look at blank, so we may do this yearly, and I'll come back to you next year and review this MOU. I'm not sure if they want to do it one year or five years, we can discuss that. Either way, is that fine with the board, if I do it one year or five years?
I think yearly, I think yearly would be a good idea.
Year.
Also, um, to get the residents of Scott County on board with this, maybe we should advertise in the county paper and in the Times News, and just let people know that that's what we're doing. I mean, we do it here, you know, we're talking about it here, but not everybody watches the YouTube, you know, replay of the board meeting and everything. But I do believe we need to start advertising, and we need to get the attendance, I mean, set up and ready to go, and get people.
That's part of those logistics that are something that we won't, we need to be ready to be seen before we advertise. And, uh, that may take a couple of months. We're a couple of drivers down right now, so that's part of that logistics. It's gonna take, it's gonna be additional routes on the drivers, it's gonna be additional work. But we were doing that before, and, uh, so hopefully, it will divert a lot of the solid waste that goes to the landfill. For every ton of recycled material that we can divert, that's $47, yeah. So, you're talking about thousands of tons that can be diverted.
Mr. Dominguez, will every trash site across the county be equipped with a recycling bin?
That is part of the logistics that we'll be looking at. Yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out, and, and see what is the best setup that we can do. Uh, we're still in negotiations with VDOT, I'm not sure where Ms. Darnes left that, about the Moxon Gap sites. That would be, it could be, uh, just a big recycling site, where people go there just to recycle materials. So we'll, we'll talk about that and see what we want to do there.
That would be absolutely wonderful.
Phil, uh, you know, I told several people, they want to know what happened to that night, explained it to them, and they said that was one of the better sites in the county. And I said, yeah, because everybody's going to King's for it. They seemed to really like it, I told them, we'd been working on there. They said that'd be a plus if we could get that opened up.
And we, we've been working with VDOT about acquiring that property. So we didn't own the property.
Right.
So we didn't have a choice on removing that site. So, uh, once we get it in hand, and, and the turning situation, that's a whole lot better now than it was previous, with the work that's been done there, with the parking lot and the turning line.
Do you think that we could get a few more trash can at some of these sites? I hear they come up pretty regularly, where they, enough dumpsters at them sites, and I know with the last few years, a lot of them, I guess, got over bottom, rusted out of them, you know, we, not as many as they used to be.
But we have replacement dumpsters for those situations, and we have bottoms that, that the guys at the landfill can put on old dumpsters. But as far as a capacity of one site, we have 14 sites throughout the county, and you're visiting multiple sites when you have a trash truck go out and pick up sites. Duffield, for example, has about 12 dumpsters. There's probably room that you could put 22 dumpsters there, but you still have a limitation of the capacity of the truck. So if you go to Duffield and pick up 22 dumpsters, you're not going to be getting clinch poured on that trip.
No.
Or rickowed on that trip. So the number of the dumpsters, uh, may make it a little better for that one person that comes, and they're full that day, but it's really logistically not going to increase, it's going to make it worse somewhere else, because the capacity of the truck is the limitation. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, it makes sense, but maybe when they was, maybe 10 dumpsters at Clinch Ford, and then they're down to about five, I know they're not as many, I.
If there's not as many, I'll ask the guys about that. We have, we've bought dumpsters, we have replacement dumpsters. And, and again, uh, the, we've been down a couple of drivers.
Right.
Uh, so the, they've been running just as fast as they can, just to keep them from the top.
They'll run to death, I say maybe Saturday morning, I mean, oh.
But we'll, we'll talk to them about getting, replacing as many dumpsters as we have. We shouldn't have a side with less dumpsters.
Did we ever rebuild them dumpsters?
We didn't.
Oh. Do y'all get, like, maybe vocational school or somebody like, that'd be a good experience for some of them boys?
We have before, but the turnaround at the vocational centers is pretty slow, and they do, they do a good job, but they, they do it as a project, and it's a semester, you know.
We're well diverse, so.
Yeah. They've worked on a recycle bin, and they did a good job, but it took them all, you know, all school year to get that. We, uh, we have a couple of options, we got welding kit built here sales, we, we can buy, uh, but they're like a little boot, and usually it's the bottom of the dumpster that becomes the bottom.
Ground, that's the ground.
And you can cut off the bottom, and there's a boot that goes in. It's cheaper to do that and buy new dumpsters.
Oh, yes.
But it takes time, and it takes a person doing that, that, uh, we really don't have. They're driving trucks just to keep up and find the flow up now. So it's, we get full staff, that'd be a lot easier to do.
I interviewed a hard motor two driver.
I interviewed one last week, and he went for his physical, so hopefully, his start date may be next week. Uh, the other position we're waiting on, some personnel stuff to, for that to open up. We could go ahead and hire that, but, uh, it's probably prudent to wait, make sure I have that position.
Those cardboard dumpsters for the recycle?
Yes.
What, you're gonna have just one of them at a site?
Probably, yeah.
They need to be something put on it, that they need to break that cardboard down if they don't.
Right, they have a little slit.
That dumpster fills up pretty quick.
Yeah, they have a little slit, and I'm supposed to throw it over in it, but they have a little slit, and what will happen with? And what will happen with cardboard, you may, you must see that cardboard being full, but other places, they're not full yet. So to run a cardboard run, you would do a packer truck and they would go get all those cardboard dumpsters, go inside and take that load to Southern County. They can't go to the site like, pick up trash and get the cardboard at the same time. So it's a special run. You know, it could be on a slower day, maybe a Wednesday or something, that they make that run. So on cardboard, that's what you would see. And you may have one filled up and you may get caught. Cardboard's filled up, that's why we don't go pick up that dumpster because it's full of cardboard. We need several of them, pretty full, to make it feasible to them. If we have a site that that's happening a lot, we might try to buy another cardboard dumpster and put there to make a little more capacity for that. But like I said, we've been out of this game for a few years now. So getting those logistics back, we'll see what the dynamics are. The biggest thing that concerns me is the sites being open and not manned with recycling. I hope that works out on that, but observation tells me it may be a problem.
I did have a couple of questions along this line. Do you foresee the more closing of the convenience center once you commit a truck to go to the recycling center?
In closing, you mean like they fill up?
Get closed because you don't have a truck to pick up the trash?
Right. Hopefully we can do that. Most time, that happens on specific dates, like Mondays, you know. Because Saturday, you have one truck running and everybody takes the trash out on Saturday. So Monday, you may have sites full. Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning, Thursday morning, you don't usually see that unless there's a holiday or something. So we went and planned a recycling route on Monday. And we would have all our resources to open the sites as soon as we can. When you have sites open twenty-four, seven, for six days a week, it's inevitable that you're gonna fill up at times and be closed. The difference is if they were open just forty-eight hours that week and man, people would know when they were closed. But we can't leave them open if they're full until a truck can get there to service them. Unfortunately, people will throw it on the ground.
The other question, have you had a chance to look at projected savings, financial savings to the county for the recycling?
I haven't had a chance, but like I mentioned, any diversion of material that goes to the landfill reduces what's going through the transfer station, trips to the landfill for the packer trucks, the capacity that you're talking about, sites filling up, you know, that takes away volume that would fill a site up and puts it into the recycling bin, especially paper and plastic and stuff. So you can, you can, I can give you those numbers like at the end of the year after we've been recycling on how much recycle weekly. We're dealing with thirteen thousand tons of solid waste a year. If we can recycle twenty-five percent of that would be awesome. So you're looking at, I don't know, four to five thousand tons of recycling and times that by forty-seven, so it could be substantial. Now savings, it still takes manpower, fuel, trucks and logistics to take the recycling to, but we're hauling that material anyway, so.
The reason I ask, I did talk to Russell County last year and they went through a recycling program. But their final analysis was it was not cost beneficial to the county. So they, I think they discontinued their program.
It's probably a nice break even. You know, it's, it's about being good stewards and what people want to do and diverting that saving landfill space. And I mean, there's a lot of reasons other than bottom line money to do something. So I think it's the right thing to do. And people seem to want to be able to recycle. And Southern County has offered us a good opportunity. And, you know, as technology comes along and other things come along, hopefully we can get toward a hundred percent of solid waste could be recycled and doesn't take so much diesel to get rid of it.
Does one truck is all that runs on Saturday? How do they decide where to go?
They have, they have.
They can go to fourteen.
Yeah, they do, they do two routes and they do all the big sites. The only ones we don't hit on Saturday is like Fireview, Upper Fifty-Eight and some of the sites that too, it's not as busy.
Well, they do like two loads?
We tried the running two on Saturdays for a while, but when we have a driver work on Saturday, he takes the next Friday off for working on that Saturday. So if you have two drivers working on Saturday, you got two days during that week that you either got two drivers off or a driver leaves. So it's better to have them just one on Saturday and having them during the week.
How many drivers have you got running that?
We've got five employed. You know, I can get you that number exactly in your names. We have two positions that are to be filled. Now, some of the other positions also have CDAs and are driving for us, like the mechanic position. He's been having to drive a lot late on routes instead of being able to concentrate just working on trucks. The solid waste manager that's usually at the transfer station has CDL and he'll make routes. So.
Well, we got four packer trucks.
We have four packer trucks and then the old one, the old eight that we bought during COVID to, to rent by, but yeah, five packer trucks and three roll-off trucks.
Are you looking for another driver besides the one that you had mentioned?
I will.
As you said that we're down to two drivers.
I can't, there's, there's still, on, on the way that position came open, there's still, we're going through a process.
I think I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, and I don't want to hire before I know the end of that process. And then, then I'll advertise for it.
Seems like we owe you a MOU for solid waste recycling. Does anybody want to make the motion for that?
I'll make that.
Michelle makes the motion. Does anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Mr. Peters says, I'll vote in favor by way of saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Christine, we're on point.
We have one appointment to the building code appeals board and we do not receive
Bill or Sally, could you run the board on what the building code appeals board does and how often they meet?
In the uniform, state law building code, one of the requirements is that the county has a building code board of appeals. And that's made up, there's some requirements on that, who can be on that? It's engineers, contractors, tradesmen, and then, you know, a citizen. And what that does, if the building official makes a decision on interpreting the building code, that they can, and they can't resolve it through statement, the building official, the permit holder or the contractor or the citizen has the right to take it to the building code board of appeals. So they would look at it and not really change what the building official, change his authority or anything, or change the code, but look at the interpretation of that code and make a recommendation that they, that the building official is looking at it right or not. And then either the county or that person, if they didn't like that outcome, can go to the state board of appeals. But we're supposed to have a local board of appeals. Now, when I was building official back in two thousand and one, I had them meet just to let them know who they all heard and what that story. I'm not sure that that's happened since, and I don't think we've ever had to convene the building code board of appeals. Because we, we try to work stuff out and use our discretion and work with people and make sure we're doing the job right and doing that. Nevertheless, we've got to have them in place. So that's who they are.
All right. Thank you. Was there another question?
We have one for the planning commission. Ashley Snobus has been serving. She did not reapply, telling you did not receive any applicants.
I think I got a feeling that we have. I'll ask around. Mr. Stewart, I was interested in that position earlier. This year or maybe last, like last year, I might be able to convince him. Thank you. County attorney report.
I don't have anything for you today. Do you have my report in your packets? Happy to answer any questions.
All right. County administrator report in all three days of it.
Right. Yeah, so I think everyone has your green sheets in your packet, but general fund balance of nine million, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, fifty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. And you can see the comparison there. And then going to the bills, we had a total claim amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. There were no early set bills with the closeout of the year. We just entertain a motion to pay bills.
Motion to pay bills.
Sound good.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Stephanie makes the motion. Michelle seconds. I'll vote in favor by way of saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
We have a request from Duffield Days. I believe the request is, what, a thousand dollars, which, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's what we've done in the past for that. We just need to.
All right, I'll make the motion. I'll say it. To Duffield Days.
Contingency. So this will come out contingency, correct?
Yeah. So I give them a thousand dollars from contingency.
So we're starting the new year, so that's.
Yeah, we're fine.
I know, I just, I keep up with it.
I appreciate it. So I'll make the motion. Danny seconds. Everybody vote, everybody in favor vote by way of saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
We, we have, I don't know if we want to move over this or otherwise I can present it. Mr. Ferguson was planning on coming for the next ask.
We can, we can hold off on it and if you want to do the, go ahead and do the county tourism report.
Yeah.
One thing before.
Go ahead.
One thing before we go on, we need to appoint Mr. Wilson on the regional jail board. They need a letter sent saying that he is the new representative of Scott County Regional Jail Board.
All right. So in the form of motion, send that. Do I have a second on that? Mr. Castile says, Mr. U makes the motion. Everybody vote in favor by way of saying aye. Opposed? We'll send that letter.
If you need to, information for the senate bill has, I don't think I had, Ms. Patrick was requesting it.
That meeting we were talking about yesterday.
Right.
Okay.
Al, do you have your meetings?
They're four a year, quarterly.
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 The only other thing I wanted to add, I can, is just a thanks to the board for hiring me. I'm glad to be here and look forward to working with everyone and working with the citizens of Scott County. It's exciting, exciting times and pretty good. Ball rolling.
Sounds good. We've got, we've got it rolling a little bit.
Right.
Expect you to pick it up.
Here's the fire.
But we do appreciate you coming and we're glad to have Scott County there.
Yeah, thanks.
I never stole our money. We were in pretty good shape, had nine million surplus and we had to take out one million and four or five to keep from raising taxes. And I noticed all the way around us, everybody's raising taxes. So I'm glad we got by with that and didn't have to raise taxes because it's taxed pretty heavy already. So I'm really glad that we was able to do that and we're still in good shape. County board for all the hard work and the budget committee for all the work they've done on it.
That's the six years since I've been on the board that we not raised taxes.
We've actually dropped. We actually raised or dropped lower taxes one year.
We've lowered three cents on real estate.
And the statement was made that we gave ourselves a raise, I believe last month. The board supervisors in Scott County, I think it's twenty years now that they've not had a raise. So that statement was false.
We had a, we had a chance to raise it, but the old people that was here voted it down. Kind of dumb, but they did.
No one's ever known.
Shows you how smart this bunch is.
And it has been twenty, around twenty years.
We still make forty-five hundred dollars and fifty-four hundred dollars a year. Each is always money for the record. Yeah, six years, we've not raised taxes. It's pretty substantial.
Mr. Roberts?
Mr. Westman, if I can, Kevin, treasurer came by yesterday and he had four hundred and thirty-something. and thirty-some thousand dollars in delinquent taxes that have been paid since April sixteen this year.
Wow, good job, Mr. Williams.
He said that, he said that the delinquent tax rate or number is below a million for the first time in years. So it's nine hundred and some thousand left to collect.
Phenomenal job.
But I just wanted to mention that since Kevin brought it by yesterday.
Phenomenal. That is amazing.
Does anybody know if he's still got some money invested where we're drawing enters?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anybody know?
I don't know what that number is. I do know also to add on, did anybody catch what the, even though I don't like that money that we get from the casino, because I feel like it's bad, but the month of May, the month of May, the fourteen, is it fourteen locality or fourteen entities? We will get ninety-eight thousand dollars from that casino fund for that one month. And if we continue down that path, we've underestimated what we're going to get from that casino money. But that's good. I'm glad we did that. But just for the month of May, that's, it was ninety-eight thousand. Like I said, I don't like that money and it is what it is. I know we have to do good with it.
But we'll take it.
We'll take it.
We'll take that dirty money.
We'll take that dirty money.
We appreciate that.
We appreciate that, yes.
Appreciate it.
All right, third time's the charm. Let's try this.
Does he have your, does he get ready? Yep, there it is.
Well, good morning. Good to see everybody again. I have a little presentation like I did last time, so I'm awaiting for that to load and kind of do a little recap.
Well, getting it up to ours is, it's not powerful.
Give you a little recap of what's been going on the last couple of months in tourism and kind of what I'm looking forward to for the next couple of months in tourism. So, there we go. Just to kind of recap some things that have been going on in the county. Obviously, spring and summer are really big in terms of things that we've got going on. Some recent county events, of course, we celebrated the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the Daniel Boone Expedition at Natural Tunnel. We also had Kids Fishing Day at Natural Tunnel, Nicholsville Days, Gates City Jeep Jam, Apollaching Rising, or Apollaching Rising at the Carter Fold. We had the Chamber of Commerce Small Business Lunch, Virginia State Championship Horse Show at Scott County Horseshoe Park. So a lot of things, and that's just kind of a snippet of some things going on. A lot of things that have been going on in the county in the last couple of months. New businesses, which is really exciting for us to see. We have Orange Blossom Bakery and Creamery, which just opened in downtown Gate City back in late March, first of April. Heritage Table, which is slated to open in July in Nicholsville, which is a restaurant. Bach Lane, which is in downtown Gate City. And then, this isn't a new thing, but the reopening of the Fort Lottmore Pool. So those are some pretty impressive things that have opened in the last couple of months. And of course, they're really all based on tourism, so that's really exciting to see. We've also had a couple of really cool notable mentions. You know, obviously, we've got some other things that have popped up in our media, but these are just some of the ones that I wanted to bring to your attention. King's Sport Times News did a story on us for tourists and Airbnbs in our community, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, thanks to Mr. Steele. PBS Apollaching did a story on Scott County, which they shared on their social media posts. And then Chef Carla Hall, she is a TV personality slash author of several cookbooks. She's been on the, gosh, I forget the name of it, baking championship shows on TV. She came to the Carter Fold. She's got a large, very large social media following, has appeared on Good Morning America and a couple of other things. And so she did a little story on the Carter Fold, which she shared on her social thing. So I thought that was a really cool little thing. These are social and our web statistics, which I'm super excited about. As I, as you all know, I talked about this last time. Aside from our traditional marketing that was set in place with our bounty trail, which ended July, or I'm sorry, June thirtieth, so we had that bounty trail grant that we had hand-secured for an entire year that ended on June thirtieth. So we wrote out our paid advertisements with them. But aside from their earmarked bounty trail advertising, I've not spent any money on advertising on our social media pages. So this has been one-hundred percent organic growth. And you can see our numbers for the time period of March twenty-eighth, so the last, the end of March till June thirtieth, we're up by fifty percent in our views. So we're over a million views in this timeframe and we're over two-point-five billion views since I started in October. So our social media is growing exponentially. All of our numbers are in the positive. We're up seventy-four, seventy-four percent on our growth in terms of followers to our pages in the last couple of months. Interactions are up by sixty-five percent. So these are pretty astronomical numbers, considering that all of this is organic growth. None of this has been paid advertisements. On the right, you'll see our web statistics, and this is based on what corporate marketing came up with. Our website growth in the last, for the month of May, that's, that's our month of May statistics. Our website visits are up by forty-three percent and can't see what that lacks, well, engaged sessions. So the engaged sessions are also up. That means the amount of time that someone is engaging with the website is up by forty-nine percent. So we're seeing a lot of growth. Corporate marketing, again, handled the bounty trail campaign. So what we did was, and I'll show it in just a second, we ran a two-minute video in the Landsberg Visitor Center up in Virginia, as well as we had a one-month Facebook ad that ran, that showed, and I'll show you these statistics in a minute, that showed, you know, our bounty trail stuff. That was paid for with the bounty trail grant. So aside from that, all of the growth that I'm seeing on our social stats is one-hundred percent organic with no pay, which is great. Kind of trying to show some different ideas of some things that you can do in the county and really just trying to bring to life some examples of some stuff that we have here. And, you know, I was talking to some of the folks at Natural Tunnel about this. You know, I've lived here my entire life and had Natural Tunnel. Down there at the bottom, see where it says five? There was an arrow.
Down the left-hand corner.
Yeah. Hit that six. There we go. There we go. There we go. Sorry about that. That's a lot of video stuff going on today. Sorry about that. So anyway, this is a little corporate marketing update that kind of talks about what we've been doing with them. Again, our bounty trail campaign wrapped up in June, and that included a thirty-second targeted ad on Facebook that they ran, as well as a two-minute video at Lambert. And I've got the statistics in there for what that did, but that performed really well. Bill, if you could hit that play, this will be, this is just the video that ran on Facebook. Scott County, Virginia, where history needs sustainable agriculture. Stay at our National Register listed home with one-hundred-and-sixty acres of pristine farmland. Quench your thirst with our one-hundred percent natural alkaline mineral artesian well water. Indulge in the rich flavors of our grade A Homestead goat cheeses. Discover the sweetness of all-natural honey on our state-inspected honeybees. Plan your visit, go to scottcountibountytrail.com. We are sowing traditions and harvesting memories. So that officially wraps up the bounty trail, like I said. And so one of the things that we're planning on doing, or one of the things that we came up with to kind of still support our bounty trail folks, is that we wanted to have our Makers and Growers Festival. I think that's the next slide there, Bill. To Scott County, Virginia, where's you? No, that's upcoming events. Okay. So these are just snippets of some upcoming events that we have. I talked about this last meeting. I have a master calendar that I've shared with a couple of different folks across the county to help me keep updated, to make sure that we have all of our events as best we can keep up with. And that also helps us stay up with our social media and be able to share some things that are going across the county. So this is what I was going to talk about here for a second. Again, we do not have the bounty trail anymore. I want to be able to have an opportunity for our farmers and our producers to still be able to showcase their products. Therefore, with, in conjunction with Vocational School and the Extension Office, we came up with an event called the Makers and Growers Festival. And we are going to do this on September twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. I said if the farm show, or the Menave Farm Show or Empire Home Craft Days had a baby, this would be it. It's a collaborative effort to showcase everything that our students are doing at Scott County Career Tech Center, as well as our local artisans and agricultural folks. A two-day event with tours of the facility and showcases of what they're doing, as well as vendors, food demonstrations, and activities for kids. So far, we've got over thirty vendors right now, and that's not really been us pushing it. So that turnout is looking really great for that. Again, I'm really excited because it's a collaboration that kind of showcased everything that's going on in the Career Tech Center, which is incredible, as well as offering our folks an opportunity to be able to sell their products. We're hoping to really kind of have a farmer's market pushed to it, as well as having our vendors too, so. Some business marketing things to kind of discuss, just some things that we've been doing or looking forward to. We had an Airbnb listening session back in April, which was really exciting. Eddie had talked to me about setting this up. He had talked to some different folks in the county who had Airbnbs that were interested in organizing it, so we did just that. We had a little listening session where we gave Airbnb owners the opportunity to come and talk, connect with one another. That alone is invaluable for them to be able to have that option, but also to be able to talk that way so that we can market, support, and expand the business with us not really having a hotel per se. Our Airbnb and short-term rental community is huge, and we obviously want to support those folks and let that continue growing, because when people do come to stay in the region, we want to offer places for them to stay. And one of the things that we discovered in this meeting is that, you know, it's not just people coming to stay or coming to visit Scott County. There are people that are coming and staying in Scott County that are visiting Russell County and Wise County and Lee County. And so we want to continue to be that premier lodging center for Airbnbs for people traveling to the region. So one of the things that we were able to do out of this meeting is I contacted Mr. Steele and he came up and did a article on our tourism, our Airbnb communities, and was able to kind of follow a couple of the owners out of their homes, get pictures of them, and put that on in the newspaper, which was great. So we're hoping to kind of expand on that, continuing to promote our Airbnb owners. Something else to look forward to is our Tourism Appreciation Dinner. I'm going to have that this year in the end of July. So it's going to be kind of an annual meeting of our tourism entities and our community leaders to kind of first and foremost thank them for investing in tourism in this, in our region, but also provide collaborative opportunities and support that community. Because one of the things I've discovered with my Airbnb group and then the entrepreneur group that I had situated back in winter, was that any time you can get all these people together in one room is a good thing, because they're able to talk, they're able to discuss, they're able to collaborate. A very prime example of this is that the new Nicholsville Restaurant, the Homestead Table, we're going to host, well, show you. I think each one of the board members should have gotten this in their email at this point, an invitation to come out to the tourism dinner. It's going to be hosted at the Heritage Table in Nicholsville. And through a collaboration meeting that we have with entrepreneurs, Brookhaven Farms, J. Cover, Brookhaven Farms is going to be supplying some of the meat and some of the food to the Heritage Table. So these are basically two entrepreneurs that we're able to connect and able to, you know, use regionally sourced products for their businesses. So I'm really excited about that. So overall, it's been a really busy couple of months. I'm looking forward to a couple of more really big things, this one being one of these things I'm looking forward to. So any other questions?
We've got a new business stake in our early years, Redstone out there at Natural Tunnel.
Yes, I have reached out to them to do a video on them, and originally, they had said, hang on, we're not really sure if we're going to stay open. And so I think back in the late, early spring, they were moving towards shutdown.
It was a touch and go, but I think it's still...
Yes, it is. And so Candy and I have spoken, and she's on my agenda at places, so she's...
A lot of people don't know which other.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anything will help them.
Absolutely. Well, like I said, she and I have been in touch, and we've actually not nailed down a date, but on that end of the county, I still have the Mountain Jogger Coffee to do. I have Redstone, I was going to do Duffield Lumber, and then there's another one that I have on my calendar for down there. I can't remember who it was, but yes, so that's, that's all on the agenda. Any other questions?
For the social presence, you said that that was increasing. Are you tracking like how many people click off from the social to the Scott County website and like how many more feed into actual listings?
You know, that, that's a great question. Rain, or corporate marketing has been tracking that, but one of the things I have completely forgotten to do is to share, and Rain has told me this before, to share our website with each one of our reels, because we are getting so many views on some of these videos. It would be a natural thing to do, and I will take full responsibility for forgetting to do that. But yes, that has helped with the increase. You know, seasonally, we have an uptick in the website visits just because people are traveling, but yes, that has certainly helped. We've not, I'm not tracking those numbers lately, but in the past, being able to kind of see that some of that stuff is coming from social media for sure. Any other questions? Thank you.
And what happened to Mr. Ferguson here?
Yeah, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
We're going back to point twelve B sub item two, and Virginia ban on expanded polystyrene school exemption request.
Mr. Ferguson, how you doing?
Good. How are you all today?
Good morning.
Good morning. Hope you received a copy of the letter of a request exemption along with the document the county department of the head has released that the ban on the use of styrofoam within the schools. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to the document, I'm going to ask that you would grant the school division a year's exemption of this. I think you go as far as a year at a time, the way the document reads. You probably have noticed on billboards, stop the ban. Probably, I think it's written out the word stop. You see, I think there's one out here across from where Thriftway used to be. Took me a while to figure it out, but that's what it is. It's a container that's opened up, it's spelled the word stop. That's what it has it relates to. This went into effect as of yesterday. Scott County Public Schools participates in the Southern Appalachia Mountain Co-op, as do many of the other divisions throughout this part of the state. And as of right now, they don't have a good substitute at this time. We do have these products on hand, and I laughingly joked about it. We'll still have to thumb away anyway if we can't use them. But anyway, I'm asking for an exemption, and I have to, so it will, and it has to come from the locality.
All right, your motion for this exemption for the schools.
It's forwarded.
Mr. Junior, move.
I'll second it.
Michelle, seconds. Everybody vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all so much. Have a good day.
All right, moving right along. On item fourteen, Supervisors, Comments, Requests, and Recommendations. I would just like to take a second and thank all of the staff that have worked so hard during this transition period. Bill, Mark, Tina, Amy, thank you all. You all have really held us together, and sadly, of course. You all, you all have really held this county together through this time of transition, and we really appreciate that as a board.
Oh, yes.
And we look forward to seeing what all we can do in this new phase. So we really appreciate it. Thank you all. It's, I know it's been tough. It's not been the easiest... It's not been the easiest six months to have done this, or it's probably more than six months, and it's probably been like eight. No.
Since February.
Ten, three, three years. It seems longer to me. There has been a lot of things going on, and you all have handled it exceptionally and juggled everything. Thank you all so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anyone else?
I do have my usual. I'll tell Mr. Wilson, I do report monthly on the VDOT that I still get an account. Anyone in the county that's having an issue with roads can call me. But first of all, something that was in the Kingsport Times on June the seventh, the report on Appalachian Regional Commission, ARC, twenty twenty-six designation, Scott County was declared at-risk, which is unchanged from previous years. That does qualify for seventy percent ARC matching funds, and this would be for water and sewer projects. So this would be more so toward the PSA, but localities. Scott County had a three-year unemployment rate of three point three percent per capita, per person income of twenty-five thousand, two fifty-three. And I'm thinking that's eighteen years or older. I'm not sure what the criteria is for that, but I'm thinking that's adult, eighteen. The property rate is currently at eighteen percent. Within this designation, Dengannon is what they call a tract, T-R-A-C-T, location. And that has been the case before. They're economically distressed, so they qualify for a higher percentage of grants. The next item, we, each of the supervisors, I think, got an email back from Joan Kilgore regarding enterprise zone and how it affects small businesses in the county. He said contacts being made with small businesses in towns, incentive notification. However, he's getting limited responses. He's currently looking at small business participation. Retail and tourism requires two new jobs or a fifty thousand dollar investment, and they would qualify at that point after review of tax incentive, tax incentives. And also, he wanted to make everyone aware, if you're a small business, you can contact his office and get more information on incentives and low-interest loans. This is the VDOT portion that I usually do each month. The Nicholsville Pedestrian Bridge has loose metal that's been reported to VDOT. They've done a site visit. There's no immediate safety issue. They're scheduling a bucket truck in repair this month. Antler Springs Road, drain pipe is needing replacement, and the bus turnaround that Mr. Seventino is providing to the school system, that is going to be done in the week of July the fourteenth. They're moving the big excavator from Hiltons once they finish up over there on some work down to Antler Springs Road. Mr. Semper wanted me to update the mowing schedule. The primary will be completed on the second round by July the fourth, so this week, the second round on primary roads. On secondary, this week, Twin Springs, May, Stanley Town, he's estimating they're currently at eighty-five percent complete in the county and will be a hundred percent by mid-July. And I was going to discuss the thing we did earlier about the motion, but that's been taken care of. This, someone brought this to my attention this week on the transfer station requiring cash. They asked if there's any way that we could implement a debit or credit card.
There's probably a way, Mr. Skene, but there's usually a fee associated with that. It's three to five percent. We can look into that. In the last year or so, we've gotten Wi-Fi at the transfer station and improving our internet camera capabilities, so that could be an option. People can set up accounts if they, if they come by our, quite a bit. I know the contractors do. They set up an account down here at the county in their bill based on the tickets coming from the transfer station. But I understand that, I wouldn't have cash either.
Well, this guy.
If I was rolling up our, yeah.
But he's free and big at seven to eight. He had already unloaded, he didn't realize he had to pay the cashier stuff.
Yeah, we can look into that. There may be some mobile app or something that's more, uh, simple that we can do. It's just that, that fee, I know we've talked about that with bill permits and down at the animal shelter for adoption fees and things like that, but there's always seem to be some fees involved.
It's like a three percent most of the time.
Yeah, logistics that. And what, what do we do with that two percent? How do we put that through the system? It doesn't go to the, you know, the revenue line item for the transfer station, somewhere else. So, yeah, that would be a good thing we'll look into.
Thank you. For your information, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Jeter, myself, and Larry from Nicholsville, Ferguson, met with the superintendent at the regional jail in Duffield, and he suggested ways that we could reduce our cost in the legal process and transferring inmates back and forth. And I did run into Judge Kilgore at Third City last week, and I mentioned this to him. Of course, he likes to see the inmates in front of him live, so that's the issue. For us, I think it's saving money, which, but he's open to talk, and I told him, once you got settled in, that we'd like to meet with him. He said, that would be fine. We had had Mr. France in with the Recreation Department last month, and we had asked him to look into the, I think, third request, extended hours at the golf course. Has anything happened with that?
I have a hard thing back in my head.
This was extended hours during the summer months to try to increase revenue. School funding, Chairman Manus and I met with school super, this we discussed during budget, but not actually live to the public. Chairman Manus and I met with school superintendent, Mr. Ferguson, to discuss contributing three hundred thousand dollars to offset the county's contribution to the Life Saving Cruise. And as you know, we ended up with two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and this came through the backend to the county's general fund, and it comes from the difference in the forecasted number of students versus actual. And there are sixty-eight more students budgeted this year than actually had, so that left excess. And my understanding of that has not happened before, that we've received anything back, that there's no reconciliation. So my recommendation yearly, I think March is the date, that number, we see that number. My recommendation to the board is that we review that at the end of that period, and if there's excess money, then discuss bringing it back into our general fund. This year, I think he estimated two twenty-five or somewhere near ballpark. That's where that came from.
Just to clarify, Mr. Skene, that money was never in the school's possession.
No.
It was ju, it had, it was in the general fund and remained in the general fund. It's just they didn't draw down that much less. So it's not money that the school system had and then gave back to us. It's money that they didn't draw down from our general fund.
And as far as checking it every year, there have been years that we vote them extra money.
Yes.
So it goes both ways.
Yeah. When they're underestimated, then we add to their vote. So I'm saying when they overestimate, they need to come back in. So that's my point with that. School funding, on the news recently, our bordering counties, Wise and Lee in Virginia, and Hawkins County in Tennessee have looked to cut the school budgets. Scott County budget's roughly over seventy million, a little bit over seventy million. It's a third of our Scott County's total budget. We have a similar budget plus seventy million. That's Wise County, and they have two thousand more students than we do. This year, there are four hundred and twenty-one Tennessee students attending Scott County schools tuition-free. It's costing the system one point five million and the Scott County taxpayers three thousand dollars per student. Some of the numbers on the border, elementary schools, Huma, thirty-four percent are Tennessee students, Weber City, thirty-one percent, Gate City, twenty-two percent, Gate City Middle, twenty-one percent. And those numbers are growing while our local Virginia residents, students are declining. There's also been a request or in the process of requesting four million dollar grants for Huma and Weber City schools to add office space.
Not that the county was paying anything for.
Mr. Ferguson said there was no commitment on the part of the county. There's, the school system is the county's largest employer, and there's one employee, school employee, per five students. That sounds high now. Currently, there's five hundred and ninety-three full-time employees and forty-eight part-time. It's Mr. Ferguson's opinion that the additional Tennessee, Tennessee students benefit to Scott County taxpayers by reducing the composite index percentage and lowering the county taxes. I need to get a better understanding on the composite index. I don't fully understand it, but if that is the case, I think we need to recruit more Tennessee students if the taxpayer benefit.
I can give you that information.
Okay, good. Stephanie has a really nice presentation that she can email you where she's done the research and shown how, how it works and what components of it work. Or maybe we can just do that next meeting.
I think it's a big part of our budget, and I'd like to share that with everybody. I think it's a good idea.
Stephanie's got a very good understanding.
Sure. If you, or do you want to go through it? Do we have time?
Yeah.
You want to pull it up?
I say, I say go for it.
Well, we're kind of extended now. Can we do it next meeting?
We've been, we've been to meetings.
It will take me twenty more minutes to go through.
Okay, go ahead.
Maestro, if you please.
Wait, okay.
Good. All right, so I wanted to, I'm going to caveat this with saying that all of the information that I have used in this presentation, I have pulled from the Department of Education's website. Every bit of this, except for a few of my assumptions. So with that, let's look at the local composite index and how it's calculated and what it means to us as a county. So, you know, we've talked about this for a while, so my hope is that you'll see what I see whenever we get through this, because when you actually plug the numbers in and do the math, that composite index is affected significantly by the reduction of Tennessee students. So the first part here, this is how the calc, this is how the calculation is done. This is done, it's based on the three indicators of the locality's ability to pay. So it takes into account the taxable retail sales, the adjusted gross income of the county, and the true value of real property in the county. And if you go to their website, you go to the next.
Now, is this just the, the three factors, which, is that just Scott County residents or is it taking into account all the students and their parents?
It takes into, I'll show you. Whenever you pull this up on, I can get this thing to click forward. How do you go to the next one? Bill?
Little button's not working.
Uh-uh.
Little working.
Oh.
Okay. Why isn't this working?
Just click me through, it's fine. Just click me through, it's fine. So when you go to their website, and this is actually one of the spreadsheets that is available for you to download. You download this spreadsheet, I chose Scott County, and it actually gives me these numbers. And you can see when the, it's off, it's based off of a twenty twenty-one is the base year for all of the indicators. Now, that changes, but they update this as it changes. So they'll do this, I can't remember exactly when, how often they do that. I can't remember how often they do that, but they do the, the base year, and then they'll do the calculation, and then, and then that, those are, those are standard numbers, right? So these numbers are weighted, and multiple calculations are going to be shown on the next slide. The calculations are given on the website, like I said. Four steps to calculating this. The average daily membership composite index, the com, the per capita composite index, combining of the two indices to arrive at the ability to pay percentage. So those, again, that's how it's weighted. The true value is fifty percent, the adjusted gross income's forty, and the taxable retail sales is ten. But also, each locality's index is adjusted to maintain an overall statewide local share of forty-five percent. The local share is forty-five and the state share is fifty-five. But I'll show you how I wrote that. Next. So that's the, well, before you click, well.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Before you click, this is actually this year's. So our composite index for the final twenty twenty-four, twenty-six years, so they do it for two years. It's calculated, and it's, and that number is what that number is for two years. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, technically, three, well, three years. But, is that right?
No, it's for two.
It's for two, so it's twenty-four and twenty-five, and they'll calculate it again in twenty-six. I'll get it right in a minute. I'm a little nervous.
Here goes.
Just because we're live.
It's just that.
Okay.
It's but, like.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Anybody have any questions about this so far? This is going to be a lot of information on this next slide. Oh, for one. Forward. Okay, there. So here is the calculated, the calculation steps given off of the website. This is how they arrive at that number. There's a lot of calculations in there to arrive at each one of those, but I've, I've worked those out. And I input all of the information based off of Scott County's numbers. So that's the first one, the calculation of the average daily membership composite index. The second step is the per capita composite index. So there's the steps for that, and I just, like I said, I just plugged those numbers in that were given off of the website. This is the third. This is where you combine the indices to give us the ability to pay. And down there, that final composite index, remember I said earlier, it's forty-five percent, so there's where that forty-five percent comes into play. So there's, I think they said eighteen seventy-two. I got eighteen seventy-eight, and that may be just a rounding thing, but, so eighteen point seventy-eight percent is what our county's ability to pay is right now.
So you're saying for each of those students that if they cost the county three thousand dollars, we're only paying five hundred and some odd dollars?
Which I think it's a, yes.
It is probably a little bit more than that.
Yeah, in that neighborhood, yes. So less than twenty percent. Right? So using those same constants, and the only variable I changed was excluding those five hundred students. So if you, if the, if the school board, which we can't, charge tuition, if the school board decided to implement a tuition, those students do not get counted in our average daily membership. They're excluded from that. So they take, that takes off that five hundred. I said five hundred, you said four twenty-one earlier, I just used five hundred as a as a round number. There is what it is with the thirty-three hundred students. That includes both Tennessee and Virginia students. The second number is where I changed that to where if we were to lose, technically speaking, we wouldn't be losing them. We cannot count, they cannot be counted toward our average daily membership because they are paying tuition.
So in other words, what we need to do then, by what you're saying, is tell the Tennessee kids, all of them, come to Scott County and come to school because we're making money.
We're not making money.
Well?
We're not making money.
How, if we're not making it, it has to be costing us then. So, I mean, you just said that it wouldn't get to tuition, so let's tell them to come free. We're not going to give them, charging no tuition because we're getting it from the state.
I don't think we can ever get that number to zero. If we could get it to zeros, then sure, sure, that, I think that would be something that you could do, but there's always a point of.
If the Tennessee students stopped coming.
Okay, if they stopped coming, what does that mean then?
That's what that means.
That means that?
That index would go up to twenty point two zero nine five, almost two percentage points, or a little over two percentage.
Explain it. Are we making money or respecting money?
Well, I didn't, I didn't put this together for us to have the discussion of making money or, I put this together to make, to show you what the implication would be should they charge a tuition, is what I put this together for, to show the.
I'm kind of like Donald Trump. I mean, the way I see it, I mean, the Tennessee figures I got is ninety-eight hundred dollars a year.
I'm going to show you the next, I'll show you the slide.
So, I mean, if they're charging us a tuition, I think that we should charge them a tuition, and, I mean, it's kind of like the tires. I mean, I can't see somebody getting, paying fifty percent, then we're going to do them and let them have that ten percent. Now, that's the way I see it. I don't know how the rest of y'all see it, but if you can explain it to me, I'm.
Again, like I said, I'm just showing you that if they charged tuition, what that effect that has on us, not necessarily.
Okay, explain it.
If they charge tuition, it goes back to the state, it don't go to the county.
Yeah, if they charge a tuition, it goes straight to the school system, not to us.
Okay, I believe you said you had a better explanation on that.
Anyway, so there's if those A D Ms lowered. Okay, so here, there is a lot of information on here, I know that, but again, this is the basic aid per pupil. What you're talking about, Danny, was that ninety-five hundred dollars or something?
Ninety-eight, what I've been told.
Okay, well, I've got ninety-five.
Okay, very slow.
The, so this is where Eddie, you were talking about earlier, about the March thirty-one deadline and those types of things. Well, this is, this comes into play here too. So Scott County is projected for 2026 to have thirty-eight hundred and eighty-six students. If Scott County school systems charged a tuition for the five hundred, they're removed from that calculation. So right now, it's ninety-nine, what is that, ninety-eight?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-five, or?
The first number.
Ninety-eight, ninety-four.
So that's where that number comes into play. They adjust, they say that thirty-eight eighty-six is what they base that number on. So that's the cost per pupil right there, ninety-eight hundred dollars right now. If they are removed because of tuition, they're also removed from this number here. So that would reduce that projection down to thirty-three. Costing, you see, the other numbers don't increase. But the cost per pupil goes up because the affected, or the average daily membership goes down.
Right, so you're saying if you look at that per pupil amount for projected 2026 as ninety-five, eighty-nine, nine hundred and eleven, then if the state moved our composite index up, that would go to twelve thousand one point seventy-eight?
Yes.
So it looks like that does diminish, but there is, to the point of like recruiting Tennessee students, there is a point of diminishing returns, and we're probably
Right.
approaching that at some point. We didn't have to do kind of a calculation out to see like where that would be, but.
To know what that number would be.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a member.
Again, let me, let me go on real quick before we, let me, let me go real quick. So this year, this is the basic aid portion of the calculation. The basic aid total that the county was required was fifty-nine hundred and, or five million?
Nine hundred eight thousand.
Thank you, I can't read that. Yes. So if we applied that to next year with those same figures, there's the difference that the county owes with five hundred less students, but they're still here paying tuition.
So we would have increased in the local share.
Our local share would have still been.
Hundred fifty-three, nine hundred eighty-two.
Yes, our local share goes up, one and a half million dollars.
Now, we're just talking state here, right? Not federal?
Right, just state money.
If you take the total amount the school system gets from state, federal, and local, and divide that by the number of students, it's around eighteen thousand dollars.
Thanks, yeah.
Actually, it's closer to twenty thousand.
Twenty, yeah, if you take the total amount.
It's seventy-one billion divided by thirty-two hundred students.
I just, I just have a problem in that, and I've been out of school system a long time, but I do know that at one time, there had to be a written reciprocal agreement between states for kids to go back and forth. Now, you know, if we send them over there, it's ten thousand dollars approximately a year, and they come over here and it's, it's nothing. I don't know anybody that has signed a reciprocal agreement agreeing to that. We've got so many kids coming over here now. I think we even send cars over to Tennessee to bring them over here now. So evidently, I, I've kind of got a problem with that too, and other factors that, and I've tried to stay out of this a lot. The other things that people have, have talked to me about is those students that come from Tennessee over here, they're competing with our students for valedictorian, salutatorian, which, you know, college scholarships and everything are tied to that, and it's taken positions in Scott County, in the school system away from our county students. And, and sports is, should be secondary to this, but they're coming over and taking spots away from our kids. You know, there's different ways to look at it, but you look at the, at one time, people would say, but we're getting back so much federal money. We're not. Local, we pay more local than the feds send down to Virginia. I, this, that's just looking at a part of it, and I agree, you know, this may look good, but.
But that only, this, this only looks at what we're responsible for. That's all I was looking at, is what the county is responsible for, not, you know, because the schools, the school board does their own budget, right? They've got their own, you know, and for us, we have to look at it strictly from the money side, in my opinion, because we don't have any control over what the school board sets as a tuition or anything. If they were to do that, this would be the implication.
Yeah, so we can't even do anything about this?
No, no, that's basically what I'm saying.
I think we can. All the other counties around us are. I mean, they're all discussing the budgets.
The, the Board of Supervisors itself cannot, but the, it would have to come from the schools.
School board.
There was also a discussion a couple of years ago, it involved Terry, Terry Kilgore and, and the superintendent and everyone, I think, and he was talking about charging tuition versus charging price, an admission fee. If you, it's different, and I don't, I couldn't tell you now, it must have been a few years ago. There's a difference in charging a tuition and charging an admission fee.
Right.
Right, because we worded it that way a year ago. Y'all wrecked me and said do not call it tuition. I think Rita might have been the one, and I can't remember.
She was involved in Terry.
Right, now, but it's still weighted. She worded it instead of calling it tuition. That way you got to keep the money in the county instead of, like Jeter said, sending it back to the state. But it's one, two ways. It's costing you money or you're making money. There can't, there can't be no in-between. It's one of the two ways. So is it making you money or is it costing you money?
There's a whole lot involved, but it's not got anything to do with us. We can't.
That's what I was going to say. You know, the thing that affects us, and that's why, you know, again, I'll pop that back on there. The only thing that we can, that we as a board can and should look at is what the, what could be the implication, should they decide to do that. That's what's the implication. You know, if they, if they, if they so choose to do a tuition, then that's the effect it's going to have on the county. You know, we don't have any control over them setting that tuition or what that tuition even needs to be. But I'm just, I just wanted to show what the effect would be if that occurred. I'm not saying it's right. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm not saying anything that way. All I'm saying is, these are, these are actual projections based off of what the Virginia Department of Education website says, is the local composite index calculation. That's.
To me, it's, I can't get clear in my mind how we, our composite index, and y'all help me, how our composite index is based on our people in Scott County, their ability to pay, their, their income, the personal property tax, and one more factor in Scott County. But then we're bringing five hundred kids over here whose parents are not counted into that for the our composite index. There's got to be, there's a problem with that somewhere, and I don't know where it is.
I think you hit on a good point.
I can't, I can't figure it. It takes somebody beyond me to figure that out.
Another thing we haven't talked about is due in roll. Those students also qualify for due in roll with the community. That's a whole different topic, but it's still a cost somewhere.
I agree, it's probably still a cost. The only thing that I'm wanting to show with this was how this calculation works.
I appreciate that. Look at first, did you send the email list to us? Because, you know, it's pretty dated.
Yes, it is. It took me a long time.
But I appreciate that you took time to do that.
Yeah, but unless any of us are planning on running for school and doing something about it, there's really not anything we can do.
Or you're saying this board doesn't, cannot take action on the total budget for the school system?
You could, you can trim things from, or you could cut things from the budget, sure, a lot of those optional things, but I don't think you would have the boards, the full board support on that. Actually, I know the full board would support that.
Which full board you talking about?
Our full board.
Well, we, I don't think we're there yet. I mean, we started the discussion, which I appreciate, but this is maybe a year-long process.
Sure.
A discussion, but it is a big part of our budget, and it's strong. They've had a significant increase in the last five or six years in their budget. And when you have a cost per student, one employee for five students and twenty thousand cost per student, that's pretty, that's getting up there.
That also counts janitors and stuff like that.
All full-time.
School bugs, drivers.
No, now they're part-time. It's full-time, five to one, full-time students.
Well, I'll tell you, the way I see it, I don't think it's right that people that's on the school board is usually employed by the school system. I don't think that's, that's conflicting interest to me with, when you've been a teacher or principal or something, and then you're on the school board. So you know how they're going to vote. You're going to vote for whatever they need. I don't think but one person's on the board and ain't been employed by that county.
That, that's probably true, but at the same time, unless we're planning, someone in here is planning on running, there's really not anything we can do as Board Supervisors.
No.
I think Mr. Ricky, I said before.
Right.
But I'm just, Mr. R, Mr. Raimond, if you recall, when we were sitting with Mr. Ferguson, he had concerns about us cutting his budget issue. So he's telling us, you can't take my budget, and you're saying you can't.
Yes, but the things that we have the power to cut are things that you do not want to, or I don't want to cut for the students of this county.
So here's, if you want to look at this last slide, when you talked about those discretionary funds last meeting, Mr. Skeen, these are those, those discretionary funds. So these are the extras that you spoke about. So this, the instructional specialist, I put a little link up here where I get this information. It's all from the website. The Scott Schools tells you which one talks about the instructional specialist, but I want you to look at this bottom number. We contribute sixteen percent, and the state gives us eighty-four percent of that to, of those total discretionary, as you said, line items. Those are things you would cut. So for every sixteen dollars you cut out of that budget, they're going to lose eighty-four from the state. But I, again, I don't, those are things that I feel like these programs here, I would never be in favor of cutting any of this. I don't see it as discretionary.
Yeah, the biggest one there, the, I want to see supplemental payments, a little food, that is for school lunches, math ingredients, instructional specialists, foster care, and so I'll, I'll go there, and that's school breakfast.
You mentioned student, teacher ratio earlier, five to one.
No, it's not student, teacher. That's employee, student. That's still teachers like eleven to one, fourteen to one.
But employer to?
That's employee to student.
Okay.
Total full-time employees versus total students. The student teacher ratio ranges anywhere from like, I think, eight to one up to fourteen to one.
I don't know if that's true for Duffield because my daughter's class at least has twenty-two students in it, and I think that's for every class in that grade, and I think the class ahead of her was actually bigger than her class.
The U S News and World Report does a student teacher ratio for elementary schools.
It'd be interesting to compare those figures to other counties around us.
But, but once again, unless we're on the school board, there's really not, we can do this.
That, and that's, again, I, I didn't put this together for us to have, you know, I did this for our information so that we have a better understanding of how this is calculated and what that potential impact might be if the school board chose to go that way, because if they choose to go that way, then we have no choice. We have to abide by those, by those figures. You know, and I mean, like I said, my assumption was five hundred students. If they charged a tuition, that's the, that's the difference. Again, I'm not, I'm not saying one way or another. You catch that mic? I'm not saying one way or the other. I did this for an information so that to kind of help us, help educate us, because I wanted to know myself. I couldn't figure it out, you know, just somebody telling me something, so I can't, I can't go off of that. So curiosity got to me and I had to spend weeks on this.
I think I speak for the whole board when I say we appreciate your curiosity.
I was, I was very curious.
Kind of starts a discussion process. Duffield's fourteen to one ratio.
I don't think.
The U S News and World Report's.
I bet they don't have the right numbers.
I was going to say. I was gonna say.
Because right now, it's...
I've seen kids, no more than that kids observe that life streams.
Dunedin is eight to one, Hilton's nine to one. And Nicholsville fourteen to one.
Is it, you feel like there's only non-students to class up in there?
That's on average.
Is there more?
Do what?
Do you think there are more than non-students per class?
Oh, yeah, sure, I'm sure. I don't think that's correct.
I think you'd be better off, if you really wanted to know that, to contact your friends, or Jason Smith, to get the real number. Because I think US News and World Report's gonna...
Yeah, they have, they may have some wrong numbers that
Yeah.
Get reported to the state.
I think they have assumption numbers, they don't have actual figures.
And every student's not the same. You've got students that require special needs and special attention, that that teacher has to mix in with the other kids and
Yes.
Give a lot of time. Most of the teachers don't have teacher aids. And even though they might have twelve kids in the class, they could have four of them that takes ninety percent of their time while they're trying to teach the others SOL standards.
So if you go to cutting...
So just the numbers doesn't tell the whole story without...
It doesn't.
Yeah, and those math and reading and preparations, they do school, or they do early morning tutoring sessions
Yes.
With kids, and things like that.
Those are, and that's what I keep seeing, is that is what is, you know, if we're talking about the discretionary stuff again.
Yes, David.
Those are the things that I feel are absolutely necessary for the success of any of these kids. You start cutting any of that right there, I mean, I, I couldn't lay my head down at night if we did, I'm gonna be honest with you.
I mean, just looking at school lunches.
And looking at, looking at the county as a whole, and what impact and what effect that has on these kids, if you start pulling out, if you say cut out, if we, if we chose to reduce that second column there, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars, I mean, infrastructure, or, we'll see, what is that one? The at-risk students, you're gonna cut that, those programs out? If you go to cutting the early reading intervention specialist out, I mean, I...
I think the biggest problem that a lot of people see is they don't see any return on this, and it's a long return, kind of thing.
It is, it's a, it's an initial investment for the long, long, I mean, you never know what kind of impact this is gonna have on these kids.
Yeah, well, you know.
I don't, and I digress, but I, again, like I said, this is just for us to look at and kinda, again, I didn't take this and try to sway one way or the other, I just wanted to see the impact of what those five hundred students, if we lost, if the school board chose to do that, what that, what impact that has on the county, because those are the numbers we need to know.
Yeah.
Because we, we can't, we can't tell them to charge a tuition, or even charge an admission fee, or anything like that. I mean, this right here is state mandated.
Yeah.
It's a requirement, I mean, we don't have a choice.
And it may, you know, help us in understanding, but then again, the taxpayers need to realize it's their money.
Yes.
It's their money.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's the whole point. It's our neighbors. The whalers, the whalers that are barely paying their electric bill.
That don't work for the average kids.
They're having to pay more of their income each year for education. And I think there's gotta be a cap on it somewhere.
But would that, would they be served by starting to have to pay their kids lunches?
The problem I have, last county, their cost per student's about thirteen thousand, average is twenty. Why the discrepancy?
Why do you say twenty? I didn't get twenty.
It's a total budget divided by the total students. We've got thirty-two hundred students, seven to eight million dollar budget.
I don't think that gives you an accurate...
Well, it gives you a comparison.
I don't think it gives you a comparison.
counties.
How much, well, anyways, we can't do anything really about that.
No.
But I appreciate the fact that we're discussing it, and I'm sure we'll be doing it, Mr. R.
Yeah, any additional supervisor comments?
I do have a couple of things.
Okay.
Okay, well, any more, just be real quick, and I will shut her down.
We're good, thank you.
Just send, just send us a copy, and I appreciate it.
You did a good job, thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thanks for taking the time.
We, we talked about this earlier, you want me to go ahead? In our budget discussion, the mountain top timber restitution for the public's knowledge, we got paid reimbursement of fifty-one thousand dollars to Scott County Treasurer. I'd make it a recommendation, we, the county paid two-hundred-and-fifty thousand reimbursement to the tobacco commission as a result of the failure of mountain top timber. We guaranteed a loan to the tobacco commission. Restitution, check came in, fifty-one thousand, I recommended to go back to the taxpayer and the general fund, and the board has decided to direct that to the EDA department.
Mr. Skeen, just for clarity, you also voted to do that as well?
I did. I wanted to make the public aware of that. But I would like to make a motion that we bring that back into the general fund, which is where it originated, as far as the payment to, to the tobacco commission. And if the EDA at some point has a need for it, then direct it in that direction. I'll say that.
I don't think there was any, I don't think there was any explanation from the EDA for that, so maybe we could move that, table this to the next meeting, and have...
There was one item that was mentioned, that they wanted to use it for, and I can't, it's something to do with agriculture.
I give it to the Department of Agriculture.
I think it's, that's fair, table, have a more discussion.
We can have John come in and talk about it.
Do you have something?
No. Yeah, if you want to take it.
Good, we'll table it till next session.
So you withdrawing your motion?
Yeah, the continuation of this topic for next meeting. The other thing we talked about earlier was the, in, in the budget process, was the Nicholsville lawnmower, and some thought there's some different options. But since then, we've been notified, some of us, that there's a good price on lawnmower. Given the situation there, the fact that they're maintaining the park, probably volunteer dollars, probably a hundred thousand dollars a year, estimated. And they like to keep the park looking good, and with Scottish Services doing it, there might be some scheduling conflicts. They like to mow like Thursday or Friday to have credit for a weekend, because that's when they rent it out mostly. So I would, again, like the board's input on purchasing a lawnmower for the Keith Park.
The ten thousand dollar?
I think the price now is around between seven and seventy-five hundred.
That does not, that does not go with our procurement policy. We have to follow a procurement policy to purchase anything over five thousand dollars, which means we have to require, we can't just pick and choose because we want to. We have to follow that procurement policy to the T. If not, we'll get...
But also, we just talked about this on Monday, I think it was the first time that I heard about it, was on Monday this week. We, we still need to see if we're...
We need to talk to Scottish Services, we need to
Yes.
Check and see if the mower that we have can, they can use it.
Yeah.
So we've got a good mind that we can
Yeah.
Take all this out before we come back in, in August.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could, just give myself, Mr. Dingus, and I'll speak with Mr. Vickers next week, and we'll kinda put our heads together and see what the best options are with that. Definitely get them what they need.
I don't think they can use a zero turn, because the guy that mows, if you're not familiar with a zero turn, you can get in trouble in there. I've got two of them. I've been in the palm.
Get yourself in trouble.
But they're keeping the park up, so we need to do something
Right.
To get them a mower, because their mower's ready to lay down, it's blowing oil out, it's not got a hood on it, it's got two new tars, if that helps.
How big a mower do y'all think it'd take to take care of?
I think he, he said similar size as they had, it's a John Deere, I think, five-seventy.
John Deere five-seventy, and I think, our A's talked to Cox Ford, and they've got it down to seventy-two hundred, which probably you can press it as a Cox Ford. But like she said, the procurement, if, what do you have to get, three estimates?
No, two up to ten thousand.
Two.
So it'd be that one plus one more.
They'd have to get another estimate on the mower, and then we'd have to figure out where to get the money from. But they're doing all the work and keeping the park up, so I think at least we can...
They did a really good job.
We're paying that part-time person that's doing the mowing. The county's paying that part-time person.
Well, I know you're paying them, but you're still gonna have something to mow with.
I know, but he's a volunteer to mow.
Yeah.
The county's paying him.
But there's a lot of volunteer hours going in up there.
Would we wanna cover the whole cost of the mower? Or are you thinking just apportioning the cost and see what they can raise through fundraising means?
Well, they've got some money, maybe, Bill said they had nineteen thousand something.
Nineteen thousand and change, do you know exactly?
Somebody's paid half, and they'll pay half out of that fund or something. But they do need a mower, they're gonna have to have a mower, or the park's gonna grow up and get out of control, because you can't go with a mower that's about twenty years old, it's pretty well done, it's due.
Mr. Wilson, do your diligence on that, and come back to us in August, and we'll, we'll see what we can do for them. I think half and half is pretty fair, if we can, if we can do that, where the money would come from.
Good, figured that.
Appreciate that. Anybody else have any comments? All right, do we have anything to go into closed session about? I didn't see anything on the schedule. All right, we don't have anything. That, that means we can adjourn till August sixth of twenty-twenty-five at nine AM. See y'all here tonight.